Happen at all, you know. Hopefully, no one gets any tornadoes or anything, but I shut down one. Seven to one today.
Who did? Who shut down?
Whole one.
Okay.
Yeah.
My West Junior meeting was put all online for tonight. They didn't want anybody dragging down to West Junior.
Yeah, yeah, I. I'm just, I hope it doesn't get.
Soccer team, but I'm.
I, we gotta track me too. I assume they're gonna cancel in, uh, South Wind.
Oh.
I hope they're gonna cancel that. We'll see. Or get the kids out of school early enough, you know, so they aren't on buses when the wind hits, but. Don't know. They'll keep an eye on that. Yeah, they'll keep, schools are real good at.
Thank you.
Yeah, keeping the kids safe, so that's their number one, so. Cross their fingers that we don't get anything. Yeah.
Good luck.
Yeah.
Morning. What is that?
My energy.
Uh huh.
Where? Cause they have the capacity.
Or does they want it located somewhere?
You know, it is potentially. But that's, I think. Looking. Put together.
Had a phone company approach us and I find.
They were.
They were. About seventy-five hundred acres. Do it here. Good morning. You show me company here to your.
Thank you.
All that money. And then show us your dedication.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning. You might be even going to sell. For walking door doors.
I. Sure.
Morning to me.
Hey, do I? Scary. What is this morning?
Morning, Dan.
They're long. Put a roundabout. It's probably just. Twenty-eight.
Yeah.
It must be. A couple of people.
No, it's a weird thing. Yeah. I think that air was weird.
It was.
Hey, Zach.
And did we talk?
Yeah. You did go on it. That's.
How you can report? I wait. Boy, where's your?
Yeah.
I was, uh, handing out over three hundred degrees.
Oh, sorry. Awesome.
It was amazing. A lot of people came down, but thank you.
Yeah.
Without seven. They're down to seven thirty and zero one thirty, so.
Wow. I can.
Heard that. Start, we had some stuff for there. Oh, all right. Do I have to?
Oh, one's mine. I got a great food there. Eight months.
Recycling Center have seventy-one dollars.
Wow, that's nice.
Six.
Thank you.
I was hoping the last. One time.
Yeah, well, I was too. I thought, oh, it's a ketchup or something, you know. But, uh, that would be nice.
Those things are thing.
I think it's embarrassing.
About the jail.
I was gonna say.
Just gonna get some.
It's like. Nobody take.
You're not for the budget? Public health. It's all public health stuff. Yeah. Oh, I know. I see. These are critical things.
Oh.
I see. I don't know what that is. We have to ask Chris then.
I have no idea.
Forty-six authority and it's.
What's the knowledge? There are three scenarios. People who don't get off. Three different scenarios. And only, I think, and only the.
One way. Hand it to the other guy.
Oh.
I just dropped. The big windfall. I know, Mark. You're coming to fear of us. We just think about coming in. Do they? Do they need file? That's right. Evidence story. I've thought about that.
Yeah. Take it off.
What do we got? Was it?
Why has someone else to us?
Well, unless it put them. How that for the evidence room is.
Oh, yeah. And I'm. I don't know. Yeah, I've, I didn't trust.
I've thought about that until I'm driving in this morning. We have.
Yeah, you got it.
We just seen all kinds of stuff, so. Yeah, very polite. Emergency prepared. That's probably like. Probably thirty.
Baby. It's all right. Go ahead. Just happy.
Baby. They got a couple of discs. I don't know. Cheers. They're gonna take. Little baby. I talked them into taking some of the courtroom chairs. Using those around the table. Instead of those old like a. The old blase steel. We are. Babies or kids. So. I'm kind of looking. We're gonna take several of those. An attorney friend of mine. Yeah. That he wanted. I want two for my office.
Down next. That he wanted.
I could see. This will keep one. They really come here. But they squeeze.
It come on. Some of.
That's amazing. Through the later river. Well, it's nine thirty. All of it so choose. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call the meeting to order with anyone present. As a reminder, the meeting is being recorded. If you choose not to. Order, you have the option of leave. First item on the agenda this morning is public hearing for the proposed FY twenty-six budget.
I motion open public hearing.
Second. Have a motion and second to open the public hearing. All of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now open. Is there any questions or comments on the proposed FY twenty-six budget? Go through the handout like this.
Thanks.
Sir gave, gave out. Okay. As you know, like when we go through the budget sheets, there's about a hundred and twenty pages of individual line items. The, uh, budget condensed down to. The form with department management required with about fifteen pages, and then I'll try to. Cover that and do, condense that even down more. Um. This is the handout. I'm gonna go through the one I said. Uh. The, uh, second page shows the, uh, final run showing that fund, uh, you anticipated. Fund balance. Uh, of the three funds that you levy property tax is in. Um, the target is to have at least twenty-five percent since we have to start in July, but the first property that is our due is till the end of September. So we need money to be able to cash flow in the meantime, so, um. We've got just right at that amount for the general basic. A general supplemental tends to run. More than thirty percent range, and we're always just trying to keep enough in there to cover a year because. For, uh, that one could be like a big flood or something. We need to be able to give the road. They're all their money at once rather than spread it out if we, it's in an emergency. On the next page shows some of the, for the, all the funding requests and how much the. Uh, war awarded to those organizations requesting funding. Some of them are plenty of E organizations that like Upper Explorer Land. Or some, and many of them are, yeah, are, uh. Some of them are other government entities like the libraries and Soil and Water Conservation District, Pioneer Cemetery, sort of preservation. Those are all government entities. And then some of them are just nonprofits that you have twenty eighty agreements with to provide services in the county. The next page is the levy rate history. Shows, uh, uh, levy rate the last ten years. And you can see we're going down about six cents. Those are rounded to the nearest penny, so they're, it's actually a particle sense, but that's. Gives you a good, uh, idea of how that levy rate is been changing over the next last several years. Um. I would anticipate because of. But, uh, property tax changes are gonna happen at the, uh, state level that this. Historical reference won't make any sense after this year because. The valuations are gonna go up, so our levy rates are gonna go down and it's not gonna be based on levy rates anymore. For a bill, let's say that. So kind of a moot point maybe next year, but this year at least it gives you an idea. Next page is the history of the valuation over the last several years. Um. You should see then as the levy rates or as the values go up, then the levy rates can go down and still generate. Funding. Front page just covers some of the big overview items that come into the budget. The constraints, uh, from the land property tax, uh, property tax, uh. Laws, uh, affect the general fund and the rural fund, and so we're required to reduce our levy rate in those two funds. And so you can kind of see I go through how that's calculated. General supplemental, uh, is not constrained by the law, but it has the same, um, constraints as far as what it can be used. And what ways it can be used, so those are very limited on what things can actually be charged to the general supplemental fund. And so. Um, we just cover what we need to cover with that. Uh, did this does, budget does cover nine hundred thousand dollars, uh, payments emergency management for the third payment. Uh, to the, for the nine oh one towers and there'll be a remainder payment next year that'll be lower. Uh, somewhere around the two hundred fifty thousand dollar amount, so that should be able to, uh, mean that next year we can lower the. Uh, levy rate sum to make up for that. That's in the general supplemental.
That'll close out the.
That last two hundred fifty will close out those payments, yeah.
To just give a little overview on that, we didn't have to borrow any money to put the nine one one towers up. They let us pay as we went. So it saved us, yeah, it was a win-win for everybody here on that deal.
Saved us money both on financing charges and.
Other counties are having to do a bond issue to. If they're, and they're looking at eight to ten million. A lot of them could be to do the same project we got done.
For how much?
That was thirty-two plus. We had another.
It was about four million. Four million total.
For. The whole.
The whole package. And, um, this does include the anticipated sale of the HHS building on Highway fifty-two. But that money is being, uh, used to pay other building expenses, so our last payment for the, the spectrum for the. Many service building purchase and then the rest into the locust road.
Shop. Shop.
Going shop, yeah. So it's going into infrastructure and not, not.
Not operating costs. We're selling infrastructure and putting it back into infrastructure.
That's kind of an overview of the budget. So are there any questions, comments?
I just have a question about, like, I think it's really important that you have the, did Ridgeway Fire Department not fall in for money? So that's why it's zero?
Yeah, that was the one time and they were buying it, uh, truck and they asked for.
For some money?
For some money last year.
Proven in the year before, we gave them.
Okay.
So we gave them, I forget, we had that ERP money we used for that that time, so. If they asked, we try, if we can, we try to help them out as much as we can. I mean, they.
Get far out and be able to get there.
Yep.
Yeah, for our own shortness.
Yeah, our, our volunteer fire departments throughout the county are a, uh, tremendous savings. If something happened to those and we had to provide that service. We have the volunteers and what we have, it would really strain our budgets.
Yeah.
And there have to be some significant changes to do so, but they, they provide a tremendous service. The volunteer provides tremendous service, both the firefighters, the EMS, all of those folks.
What is the Dell property tax? If there's property tax and then Dell property tax. Yeah, it's on the, uh.
Under general basics fund, fourth.
Right. It's under.
Oh, I'm on the fourth.
This takes.
Yeah, it's, it's under.
Under general basic fund.
Yeah, it's under all of.
Which has link, that's delinquent.
Delinquent.
Yeah. Sorry. We don't tend to have very much delinquent property tax.
So does that mean you have some note that is being used or what?
Um, anybody who doesn't pay their property taxes, they're, uh, most of our delinquent property taxes are sold at tax sales, so we get. We get the money.
So this is from people in the county that aren't paying.
Yes.
Sitting around twelve o'clock that they're.
And almost all of them do get sold at tax sale, so it doesn't become a delinquent tax or to the county. It becomes a delinquent tax or do a tax investor in the tax sale. So we don't, we get the money. Only ones that people tend to not buy a tax sale on. Uh, mobile homes because then. If you buy delinquent property tax in a mobile home and then go to collect the mobile home, it might not be there, so they don't keep these stuffs. Tax sale.
Does the state get, or does the county get to keep the money? For example, if a person owns a hundred thousand dollars. Delinquent taxes and the building is worth two hundred thousand.
We only sell the, the tax sale process sells the delinquent taxes for the amount that's. Pulled out. That's what I, we never collect extra. There is a process that if the person who pays the taxes on the delinquent taxpayer's behalf, that they can claim the property later. It takes about three years, and so that property owner has a chance to, to pay it off before they would lose the property. And all, very seldom does it actually get to where property transfers. Um, ownership. When it gives, when it's getting close to that three-year cutoff date, if there's. Most people wanna have, uh, if there's a law and it gives meaning to the property or somebody, somebody's gonna pay it so that the property stays. These available.
Who holds that property in the meantime?
The. Yeah, they keep it and it, the whole structure of the tax sale process is really, uh. Designed to make sure that the county and the other taxing entities have the money they need to operate. But also protect the ownership interest of the original owner. It's a lot of. Notices and opportunities for that owner to get that paid off before actually.
You have to be pretty irresponsible.
Yes. It either has to be something where you completely, like you said, are irresponsible and really don't want it, or sometimes. Properties that really aren't worth anything. We'll get, sometimes we'll get little triangles or slivers of property that. One down a kilmer. Yes.
Did.
A hundred years. Yeah, and that one didn't even get, nobody bought it at Excel because it wasn't worth the investment, because the property would never have covered the investment. Are there any other questions or comments?
There's a question in chat. It says, I cannot find the budget for historic preservation or cemetery online. Is the whole budget posted online right now?
The whole budget is posted online. Um, these, I don't think these notes actually, that might be. Easier, but tell Kevin, I can.
So.
I'll, uh, email him a copy of his handout after I get back to the office. The Pioneer, Pioneer Cemetery's budget is ninety-six fifty and historic, uh, preservation, county historic preservation is twenty-six hundred.
Pioneer Cemetery is just for mowing cemetery, basically what that is, Pioneer Cemeteries.
Those, those of those have increased very little, if any.
And we, we are mandated to, uh, support that, and there's forty. Out forty-five in the county pioneer ones. There's a lot of, there's a really good group of people. They do a lot of work to take care of. It's excellent. Excellent, understand.
If there's no other questions or comments.
Motion to close the public hearing. So.
We have a motion and second to close the public hearing. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Next action would be to adopt the budget. Is that by Ross Paul Hope, please?
I'd move to adopt the FY twenty. Budget.
Second.
A motion and a second to adopt FY twenty-six budget is goal call. Mark.
Aye.
Shirley.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
I also pass as unanimous. There are two, two copies of there. That action would be resolution on the, um, salaries for elected officials. Got some of that three percent. I'd move to approve the three percent salary on elected officials.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to approve the three percent salary on elected officials. Uh, it is a resolution. Mark.
And that is, cause basically what everyone else is getting in the county.
Yeah.
So that's where we.
Is that for? Is that for just the new or just the old? How long do they have to be employed before they get that, um, raise?
Elected officials are set based on the position, uh, on the person, so they're setting the elected official salary. Has no, no effect on who does the, who has the position.
Not general employees, just.
This is just the ten elected officials in the county.
Aye.
Shirley.
Aye.
Mark.
Aye.
Steve.
Aye.
I also pass as unanimous. The ten elected officials are the five board supervisors, the county auditor, the county treasurer, the county reporter, the county sheriff, and their county attorney.
That's what I was thinking. The county treasurer, he's appointed, right?
He was appointed.
Yeah, so does he get an increase when he's appointed? He's not elected.
It's an elected position. An elected position, so they wouldn't have had to give him one, but that was what they decided to do.
It, previously there was a compensation board that determined those, and typically that was, they all got the same percentage of raise, so. We did not choose to go to the compensation board this particular year.
Right. Next item on the agenda, nine forty-five, county engineer office. Morning, Mike.
Morning.
Mike this morning. I'm filling in for Michael who's down in Ames. Um, he did write up the report. Subjunct.
You're gonna be here, didn't you?
I'll just let you look it over. Um, if you have any questions. Let me know. Yep.
Mike, do you know when they are going to begin the, uh, new locking on our gravel?
They've started on some of the heavy use roads, so they're already, they started last week, so.
River Road got it.
Yep, yeah, they've been out about a half dozen places or so. We did get started. I guess I'll just highlight a couple of things. Nesty Valley, we did get started last week. We worked with the conservation, uh, they did burn the site for hurry and so forth, and silt fence will be coming soon. Um, we were gonna start on culverts on B thirty-two. Uh, they're gonna start, I think, tomorrow. Uh, we got one repair job they're looking at. They're holding off today because of possible weather. And that's in, we're hoping to auto seal that road, B thirty-two from Fort to Fistina, Fistina to Oshim.
That have the auto seal.
Um, later this summer.
It's not immediately.
No, no, we have about three, four culverts to, to work on some. And we did one last year that was kind of towards Oshim. We did get bids for, uh, striping the county this year. Uh. We got three bids. Uh, the low bidder, um. Was, uh, actually the company that's been doing our game for several years now, Cam Line. So they did get, present the low bid. Uh, we're doing, just as a reminder, we're gonna be doing center line for the whole county. And then we're gonna be doing the fog line or the edge line on the southwest part for the county southwest quarter. And that's in part because of the W fourteen. Uh, we still have that part to paint that's between Spillville and Ridgeway, so. So, yeah, the bids were favorable.
So I know, I do.
Great.
I vote that we accept the bid from Cam Line for eighteen.
I'll second that.
What is it?
Uh.
Hundred and fifty-four thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars and four cents.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the bid from Cam Line Highway Markets. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
As opposed, same sign. She carries.
The high, high bid on that was.
They got.
Three hundred five thousand five.
Is Cam Line.
We worked with them before.
Cam Line did the work for Midstate on, on W fourteen, is that?
No.
That was different.
Yeah, that was separate. Cam Line, uh, they seem to be more into painting the whole county at once. Not so much into project, although they might do some projects, but, yeah, no. Plenty of different contractors, different, similar equipment, but they seem to be more interested in.
So will we be on W fourteen, we still villain Ridgeway, will we be redoing the center stripe?
Yes. Definitely.
So was that previously a two-code application on the new, new pavement, or this is new striding?
Uh, it's a one-code application, and so this will be, they'll just go over the top of the existing.
Yeah, that one did not hold up. It was, it really, really faded fast.
Yeah, um, a lot of times on new projects, we'll use durable paint. Um, we've switched, this was just waterborne, which is what they put down every year. So it was, it's a, quite a bit cheaper, um, doesn't obviously last as long, so. Yeah, but similar, it'll be the same product that they're using now, so.
Two oh eight E bridge, that's the one south of Jackson.
Yes, yep.
Be a good July.
Yeah, right now the contracts and everything have, I think, been signed. Um, they're working that through and we're looking at a pre-con. Uh, we have to invite all the tribes that are interested. There are a couple that are interested. I don't know if they'll actually physically be here. I think they're looking at, you know, we're gonna do a teams meeting or something for that. And then we have to invite the DOT as well, so it's just, you know, you got about a dozen coordinations there with different. And then we have to invite the DOT as well. So it's just, you know, you got about a dozen coordinations there with different entities, so that's what.
Did we have some, we had a, a find with the cadaver dogs near that bridge?
Yes, yep, yeah, the cadaver dogs had a hit. Um, so that's why the Native Americans have all been invited. All the tribes that they specified, the DOT has a list and they go through that list, so. I think they invited close to ten or so, and I think there's been a couple that have responded. So we'll see how many actually, and they can be onsite and stuff too, so. But I think they'll, a couple at least will participate in the pre-con, pre-construction meeting. Yeah, and so they're looking at, hoping to get to that, uh, mid-July or so, and that's, Brennan's are doing that bridge too. Um, if you, I guess if we move down a little bit, you'll see that, uh, Bridge three twenty-seven, it's, since it's Brennan's as well. Uh, we've been in contact with them and they're up there right now at that bridge. It was a bridge that was raided down last week from twenty-seven to three ton. Um, so our bridge inspector informed us, uh, luckily Brennan's were, had kinda done a little bit of work on this a few years ago as far as looking at the bridge. And so we're able, they mobilized right away, immediately. So they put a crane up there last week. They're getting an excavator there now. And, uh, hopefully no more here by this afternoon, but.
Where is that bridge?
That's off the Middle Hesper Road. It's on a dead end. Um, so it's actually on Street three twenty-fifth, three twenty-fifth Street. So, yeah, it's a, not a heavily used road, but, uh, it still gets used, so. And they've already, uh, sent prices and so forth, and it's, uh, it's reasonable, nothing we have to vote on or anything. It's a smaller amount, so. Just talking about driving some pile and lifting the existing. Once we're complete.
Yeah.
Uh, should be legal.
Want to point out the new map?
Yeah, uh, there's a new map that our staff completed and it shows all the projects for.
I'm here for the public.
You can take it for, look after the meeting and stuff, but, uh, yeah, it's got all the projects that have been okayed for, uh, twenty-twenty-six as far as for the five-year plan. Uh, we did get reimbursed for some of the FEMA money from the federal government. Uh, it was approximately seventy-nine thousand. So that CATC did come in, um, from the federal. We haven't gotten the state yet.
So on that CATC, we got about.
From the federal government, uh, it was approximately seventy-nine thousand. So that CATC did come in, um, from the federal. We haven't gotten the state yet.
So on that CATC, we got about seventy-nine out, out of that, uh, application.
Yeah, yep. Yeah, originally it says they thought about ninety, but, uh, came in at seventy-nine, approximately seventy-nine. Uh, we did meet with Denko last week. Uh, they do, have historically done quite a bit of crack sealing, slurry seals and so forth, scrub seals. Uh, this year they're looking at Pole Line Road, specifically the western end, uh, doing some crack sealing on, and then there's a couple other uh, roads we're looking at, basically filling the cracks and, uh, trying to keep those roads maintained so that water doesn't get in and try to alleviate some of the frost boils and so forth, so. So, uh, yeah, they, hopefully we'll have them here, uh, early this summer doing some of that. Yeah, I guess then there's some personnel issues and stuff. We do have most of our summer people hired then, as far as our mowers, as well as our interns.
So if we're letting the three oh seven bridge in October, that's probably gonna be a, a calendar twenty-seven start on that.
Yeah, um, fiscal year twenty, actually they might, depending on how we let it, there is some talk about allowing, a lot of times on bridges, you can allow free winter work where the days aren't counted against them. Um, depending on, uh, right now we're looking at possibly doing that. Uh, just because there's some, uh, grubbing, tree removal that needs to be done, and that's either gonna be in the contract or we'll do that. And again, a lot of that's for bats and so forth. Um, so it kinda depends how we get all of our clearances. We're currently looking at, we've got most of our clearances as far as NIPA and floodplain and so forth. Um, we haven't gotten them all yet, but, uh, so if we can get that led in October, we might allow some free winter work, which would be this winter.
Some of the trees in that, that is possible to start after November first, is that the day? For tree removal.
Tree removal? Um, I think it's November first, I'd have to check on that.
Is it April?
Yes.
April first and November.
Yep, yep. Yeah, and they've, uh, they've updated their system a little bit, um, so they kinda, they can detail where, which bats are living where and so forth, so they have already somewhat reviewed this site for that, so. Yeah, and then of course Frankfold Road, we're hoping to get left right after that. And we may be doing, uh, we did the pipe on that last year, which you know, and then we, uh, tried to spray, spray patch those patches and some held up, some didn't hold up. Had a fair number. We're hoping to get, uh, River City, I think, is kinda up and running now, or they're getting close. Um, so, uh, either maybe next week or so, we're hoping to get some of those patches covered up, or I should say patched.
Patches patched.
Yeah.
That will make a lot of people happy.
Yeah, yep.
There's a lot of communities.
Anything else?
Okay, thank you much.
Consent agenda?
I've got the minutes, the claims, and, uh, sheriff's quarterly report.
I've moved to approve the consent agenda.
Have a motion in a second to approve your consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Supposed, sign, motion appears unanimous. Committee reports.
I, RCD met last week. Everything is going well there. Um, they're kind of doing the waiting game like every other nonprofit in the county and the region we work with and seeing what funds do come through and what funds don't, but right now they're good. Um, that's Northeast Iowa Community Action tonight, online, and that's my important.
VA dedication is today for the hospital. At one, I believe it is. Um, I've seen SS meeting last week, we've been talking further about the closure of that, and, uh, it looks like we're gonna try to make that depend on we've got some outside agencies that'll take over some of the payroll and county issues. Uh, but we'll have to maintain anywhere from three to five employees on a contracted basis to close that out by December thirty-first next year. So, uh, it looks like maybe we found one, one agency that will take that, so we'll probably be maybe closer to three employees we'll have to maintain to finish that up, because claims are gonna keep coming in for two months after closure date.
And they've all been to stay that long?
So far, yes. So we haven't lost any employees. Most of the other agencies have lost a lot of themselves, have lost all. So it's as clean as we can make it, I guess, with that. They still haven't determined what counties are gonna have offices and which ones are not, so. Most of the other agencies have lost a lot of themselves, have lost all. So it's as clean as we can make it, I guess, with that. They still haven't determined what counties are gonna have offices and which ones are not, so. Physical offices.
You gotta wait till the last day?
I guess so.
All right, next item on the agenda, public hearing, zoning ordinance amendment.
All right, zoning ordinance change, changing a couple administrative items, adding a couple new uses to the A two district. Planning Zonic Commission held a public hearing on April eighth, voted unanimously, only five members present, voting unanimously. Oh, everybody voted together to recommend approval. Here's the official copy that you'll be signing. Uh, here is just, uh, this is the ordinance that'll be read. It's typed up in a way that's not as easy to read as the information I've already given you. It's just a copy.
I move to open the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment.
I'll second that.
So motion in second to open the public hearing on the zoning ordinance amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any questions or comments from the public?
A lot of administrative items. It was all posted online ahead of time. It is, uh, a lot of little clerical things, not a lot of big changes. The, uh, and adding two new uses to the A two district.
Which are?
Two new uses are forest product concentration yards with processing, not including sawmills, and production winery, brewery, distillery, ciderry, including a tasting room.
I said, oh, I'll ask my questions after the public.
So this is what you discussed before you came a couple of months ago, discuss this.
Yeah, we, uh, we discussed that we were working on this process. Uh, we were actually working on bore changes, a eight, uh, excuse me, uh, accessory dwelling units too, but that portion has been broken off and is not included in this.
I'd like to speak, please.
Sure.
What's your name?
My name is Caleb Allring. Iowa and Winnesshe County to long-protected the agricultural interests of its citizens, both in their written code and their culture. After reviewing the proposed zoning ordinance changes, it appears that the addition of a forest product concentration yard to the A two zoning district would likely be contrary to Iowa code and county zoning regulations. The harvest, production, transportation, and stockpiling, also known as tree farming, of forest products has always been an established and protected use on A one property throughout Winnesshe County and Iowa. The activities that take place at timber harvest sites all across Winnesshe County are identical to the activities that would take place at any forest product concentration yard. Harvesting a raw commodity, stockpiling, transportation of that. It's the same process as grain farmer harvesting and then storing grain in their bins before sending it to market, or livestock farmer purchasing livestock at auction, transporting it home, processing them, storing it on at their site, and then taking it to auction. So, any changes to these allowed uses, uh, in A one, um, are unwanted, unnecessary, and likely contrary to Iowa's code. Um, the A two ag district is intended and designed to provide for activities that are strongly interrelated with agriculture. Um, the notion that the production and storage of tree products is not an agricultural activity, but is instead a, only an interrelated business, um, is probably unlawful and unfair to rural landowners in Winnesshe County. Finally, Winnesshe County would become the first county in Iowa to use county zoning to disallow rural farmers from storing and processing one specific agricultural product on their A one property. Um, by passing this, Winnesshe County would also be the first county in Iowa to set a precedent that the storage and processing of one ag product is not an agricultural activity and related use, but rather fits as only an activity that is strongly interrelated with agriculture. So for all of these reasons, I strongly oppose the addition of item thirteen to the A two allowed use section of zoning code because it's already an allowed and established use of A one. I would ask this, that, uh, the board supervisors also implement a policy, uh, to have the county attorney review all changes to agricultural zones in our county to prevent, to protect agriculture here. I printed one out for you.
There is a comment? Yeah, in the chat.
Thank you, Kat Monk. So the comment in the chat says, hello, my name is Sarah Cross. I'm a neighbor of Mr. Allring's business. As a neighbor, I can confirm that this is not the same as a grain bin. This business provides twelve to thirteen hours of load activity daily in my traffic blocking Highway fifty-two and has destroyed county roads and is operating one hundred and thirty feet from our house. I am happy to come off mute if needed.
Uh, has Andy reviewed all of these changes?
Uh, so Jana Olson has the assistant. She's been involved with all the changes that we've been working on.
Public here.
Yeah.
Another public community. I'm James Allring. I'm thirty-five years as a tree farmer in Winnesshe County. I've also run dairy and beef population in this county. Daywide forest activities and all related uses have always been A one, day wide. Separating forest products and activities from the rest of ag is just plain wrong. Sorry, I gotta have my notes.
It's fine.
Ultimately, this attempted separation of forest activities will be very expensive for Winnesshe County and totally unnecessary. It is a direct threat to every tree farm and tree farmer in Winnesshe County, of which there are hundreds from two acres to two hundred, because the activity that takes place, there is no processing that takes place at that location. All that happens is that sometimes farmers have a cut that's in the wrong place, so a little tiny time, sometimes a few logs have to be trimmed a little bit, fixed a little bit because the waters, or the farmers make a mistake. But the activity that takes place is identical to every single tree farm and every single tree activity that I go to. The cutters cut the trees down, they cut them into length, they haul them out, exactly what happens. Actually, very little cutting takes place at that location. So that's my only comment. You have any questions? Otherwise, I have work to do.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
In the forest product industry within the state.
Yeah.
Where, do you have any idea where Winnesshe County would, would place in, you know, either bottom of the list, top of the list, or something of that nature?
It provides tens of millions of dollars of revenue for the, for the county, and, and, uh, it's a huge, it's a huge benefit. Um, the, the Iowa walnut is known throughout the world as the best of the best. People fly in from, I've been doing this for thirty-five years. People fly in from sixty countries and come to northeast Iowa to buy what is a huge value add for this county. Um, we're so blessed to actually have forest activities, infrastructure around us. I can tell you that west of Interstate thirty-five, it's very common for us to just tell the landowners to pull those trees into a ditch and burn them. We, we're very blessed in this county to have the revenue that we get from it.
So it's reasonable to say that in our region of the state, we have more forest product industry than a lot of other counties.
Sure, way at the top of this. We're one of the top four counties probably in the state with Winnesshe County, McKey, Clayton, and they, uh, that's why they located the, the yard here, and. Any other questions or need?
So, in this change, how would that affect just somebody wanting to sell timber?
Well, it's, it's, it, it's potentially threatens every forest activities. If it's primary, according to what you're doing, you're saying that this is no longer A one. You're now, if you have a ten acre woodlot and that. You're now, if you have a ten acre woodlot and that is your primary activity, then you've got to be zone A two. I mean, there's so many different things going on here, so many different moving parts that you guys have stepped into. I think that I think Andy would have a very difficult time trying to, trying to separate what goes on in this one location, this, this spot zoning thing that you're doing versus, versus what goes on in every other primary forest activities, location in Winneshie County, of which there are many. There are many people across who do this, and everybody says it's ancillary, it's not, it's primary for a lot of different size operations. They're not all four hundred acres. A lot of people only have ten or twenty, and that's the only thing they do.
I guess the question I have is, I've had a lot of calls on it because that's my district up there. And the road's been blocked for eight hours, eight hours one day because their semi was stuck and it snowed. And it's, people come up over the hill and they're unloading logs in the middle of the road. And it's just, it's been one thing after another. I've had multiple calls and people not real happy. I mean, if you're gonna unload, you should be pulling down in your property to load and unload.
They, they have that part of it. I've never been like that.
That, that's the calls I've got.
I don't know exact, you know, my name is Ned O'Wray. Yeah, I haven't heard those calls exactly. I can tell you that we don't load on the road. I don't know about a semi being stuck in the snow.
Yeah, there was a semi stuck. You had the road blocked for eight hours.
And that same day, there was a semi stuck on College Drive.
I know, but this here was, you were blocked for like ten hours. People had to drive three and a half hours, three and a half miles around just to get back on the road.
The, the subject is that this is already an established A one use throughout the county and it's an agricultural activity. And trying to call it a non-agricultural activity and instead calling it just an interrelated business is against Iowa code.
If there are specific complaints about nuisance, I'd be happy to address those specifically, but. I think, I think it's a separate issue from the zoning issue.
But you're, so A two, you, you, uh, you've raised all these logs on your property.
That's one of them, Russ, that's one.
All these logs come off.
We own one hundred percent of the logs.
And some.
They, they were not raised on your property.
Some were raised on property that we own, some are not.
So considered farmers, they raise, I'm a farmer, all the, they own, they own the hogs, they own everything. They don't, they are not buying, you're running a commercial basically because you're buying logs, bringing them to your place and reloading them again. That's, that, to me, that's considered commercial.
So if you go, if I buy livestock at the core sales commission, bring it home to my farm?
You're gonna feed it there. You're feeding it there.
Okay, if I, I mean, there's so many examples that I can put down the globe, but I don't, I don't want to argue on that.
No. But you buy them from everybody, then you're reloading them again and selling them. Yeah. So that'd be, to me, I mean, in my eyes, that's commercial. I ran a business for twenty years too, so I know.
I mean, all agricultural enterprises are businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to add a comment. I, I agree with Mr. Vic there. If I bail hay and I line my hay bales on the end of my field, that's not A two. But if I bring it to the hay market, they auction that, they distribute that, they load it there. I don't see how that becomes A one, just like our co-ops or our RMB centers. This, this is very much a distribution center that we're discussing. And I'm an A, I think timber, lumber, cultivating, growing trees, agriculture. I think gathering and loading semis, Thursday, there was five there. There was a car on the road. This is a distribution center. So I want to call out if, if any farmer wants to harvest logs, that's not what we're talking about. We're talking about a concentration yard. And I think that's a very fine distinction. I don't think there should be any attack on any farmer that wants to harvest trees, A one, pull them to the end of your road, harvest them, get them out of there, just like we bail hay, we haul corn out. I don't think that part of this is under attack or even different. Well, when you talk about A two, concentration yard, that's the words that are used in this, and I think that's a fine difference in what we're talking about.
Do we have an?
I think that, that, I want to comment on that. Every single other concentration yard in the state is A one, period of the story. So good luck going down that road.
What's the, um, Iowa code section you're referring to?
It's on there.
On this one?
When anyone wants to give it one. Just go back. I'm a neighbor.
I, I didn't catch your name.
Austin Dodd. I live just north of this facility.
Austin Dodd. You know, it's here from something.
Do we have any other agricultural products that are loaded and handled on the roads and not on the farmer's property?
That I'm aware of.
I want to clarify, we're not loading them on the road. They are being loaded in our property. Whether or not they're loaded on the roads or not, last Thursday, there was three semis on highway fifty-two. There was a sedan on two hundred and twenty-third avenue with two semis as well. So there was five semis in and out. At least four of them were on our roads. Whether or not they're getting loaded or not, that's not safe for my teenage drivers to come up over a hill. And if they bought a property, it doesn't work, that's not my problem. They need to have those things on their property.
We don't own those semis.
The trucks come directly into our property, loaded in our, within our property lines, and then they leave. Whether they're parked on highway fifty-two, they're allowed to be. That's, this is America. They're allowed to be, they can do, they can be on the side of the road to check their tires or, or whatever they need to do. They're, I mean,
They are also. They are also independent contractors. Once they're outside of our yard, we don't control what they do. But if it is a, again, if it's, if there's a specific nuisance, like we're genuinely happy to obey that. So like, if the semis, you know, I can tell them not to park on highway fifty-two, for example, but ultimately, that's their discretion. Like, they're, you know, I don't have command over the trucks.
I also have a current permit from the county engineers to add a new driveway so then trucks can come in and then just go right out and it will be as close to highway fifty-two. So it'll be, no trucks will be parked on any roads, but we aren't able to go through with this permit while we feel like our business and agricultural activity is threatened. So we can't make these improvements and do this site plan until we do that, so.
Any other comments?
Don't want to close the public hearing until we all talk about this. Tony, can you weigh in on any of this, please, from the A one to the A two and why this wouldn't still fall under A one?
On the, so the planning zoning commission has talked to the Ollings on one meeting to listen to what their business plan was and decide where to put this use. Uh, at the public hearing for this, the planning zoning commission heard this pretty much the exact same conversation we're hearing here today. And they still agree that this should go into A two. As far as the agricultural use thing goes, the notion that this is going to affect every woodlot owner is not correct. We are not talking about the harvest, the production and harvest of logs is not the question. It is the concentration yard, which is the question, which, uh, different comparisons were brought up. If we are looking at any of this where we have the A two district, we have listed in there right now grain elevators. The farmers grow the grain, they grain gets shipped off the farm to a grain elevator. That grain elevator is no longer ag production. It is a separate thing that is regulated by zoning in every county. No, I'm not gonna say every county. In many counties in the state.
Under A two.
So A two is just a local title that Winneshie County uses. It is reg, uh, grain elevators are regulated by zoning. Uh, another similar use we have listed in our, uh, in our current A two district is we have agricultural service businesses involving, involving the processing, storage and sale of grain for seed or livestock and poultry. So if you are taking the grain and processing it into something else, it is regulated under zoning. Processing, heard that brought up. Processing is not necessarily just sawing in this case, but sorting is considered processing, storage, that is all processing. So we're loading, unloading, sorting, shipping, that there is technically processed.
Processing is not an A one allowed use on agricultural product. Is that correct?
There is a comment in the chat.
Thank you.
Say that again. What did you say?
So an agricultural commodity that you're storing or sorting on your own property, that is not an A one allowed use of sorting.
An agricultural commodity that you are storing or processing on your own property is not an agricultural use? That is not a correct statement.
I'm saying, you're saying that that's not an A one use, storing, storing an agricultural commodity.
So for the person who is raising, producing this crop, they can store the crop. So when it leaves the farm, it is no longer an agricultural activity. So you.
Oh, okay. So if I have a farm two miles away.
We don't bail in hypotheticals there. If you have, it, it.
No, so you can't transport one commodity from one spot to another, even if you own both farms and own the commodity?
Of course you can.
Okay.
So some of the logs on the property are ones that were grown and produced on land that we own. So is this a matter of like a threshold, like where only some, some percentage of the logs in the concentration yard can be grown on our property versus what would be bought from others?
Tony, would this be similar to the question of the manure waste leaving the farm property and then being processed into another commodity and that, so it required a rezoning?
We are not reprocessing our commodity in any way.
It's a processing function, just like if you take milk and make cheese, that's a processing function.
We're, we're not making a new product.
We're taking the logs and they're still logs when they're in the exact same form when they leave our property is when they come in.
We're not turning them into slugs or lagers or any other product. They're not being processed.
You're just like the FEET co-op or the Winshend co-op. You're buying a farmer's product, putting it on your property, processing it and so on. You're sorting, grading and stuff. You're, you're doing all that on your property. So you're doing the same thing as a co-op does, and they gotta be licensed A two.
We're not.
I actually don't.
You, you're, you're buying a product from somebody. Yes.
I'm not going for questions yet. I have in the notes here from the zoning. It said that a letter from the county attorney said it could be made there and there is no infrastructure or buildings. He stated that a letter from the county attorney said it could be allowed in its current zone.
I, I misspoke on that.
No, this is in the notes from the zoning.
No, yeah, that one, it was a conversation between Caleb and the, the planning zoning commission. And.
I, I did.
So the county attorney did not say that?
That is correct.
Okay.
Is there a meaning to it, right?
The county attorney didn't make any, didn't say whether it was allowed or not allowed. He just said, let's let planning and zoning go forth with, with what it might do, and then we can rezone if needed. If we find unnecessary.
So there's no other county in Iowa where they had to change it to A two for log storage?
Uh, so one, I do not know that at all. Uh, number two, A two again is a local term that we use here. County zoning is county specific. That is a district we have. Other counties have different districts that they use. They may call them commercial, industrial, whatever.
Is there a need, Tony, in the definitions section of our zoning ordinance to add the definition of concentration?
My opinion, no. Board supervisor's opinion may be different.
Andy down today? Is Andy here today or not?
No.
He's not in with the Janet does.
Janet does lighting and zoning. And she's, she said this looks fine.
Yes.
To change, make a change.
She's, she's been involved in this through the entire process.
So this idea that we could get sued or whatever because it's a wrong decision is.
We can get sued for a decision. We make it anytime.
She's given her professional opinion.
So my understanding, Tony, is that if a property owner who has forty acres decides to have some trees removed on that property and sells them, and they're cut, they're stacked, they're cut to lengths, and then they're picked up, there's no prohibition for that farmer?
That is absolutely correct.
According to these, or just changes, okay.
The pro, the prohibition would be where the logs go once they're cut.
That isn't the county's problem. Whoever you sell them to, that's same way.
The farmer settles his corn.
He sells his corn and that's, it's gone. Yeah, no.
Need like a little more time to think this through. I'm just talking all along.
Coming.
For that reason, I don't want to close the public hearing. I want to suspend it. So we can continue to talk about this at a later date.
You want to continue to allow public comment at a later date.
We can still discuss it, even if we close.
Yeah, there is, we can discuss.
The semis do not all come directly to the property. We have photo and video evidence of that. They have left their semis parked on the side of the road. A school bus was almost hit because these semis are blocking the view of highway fifty-two.
All right.
We've, we've, we've had the sheriff deputy come out and apologize to us for people making unfounded complaints, so.
Want to close the public hearing?
Wait, I, I want to make sure that if we close the public hearing, that means no public can make comments anymore on it, correct?
We had a public hearing. It was, or they.
I mean, you can suspend, you can suspend it and continue it, or can, I think the actual word is continue the public hearing on another date.
I would like to move to continue the public hearing on another date.
But you could also close it and then talk amongst yourselves at another date. I mean, you obviously have, any ordinance amendment has additional readings, so you wouldn't have to waive readings. You could, whether you want to proceed, how much you want to proceed is up to you as a board.
There's a motion on the table.
You're, you're making a motion to continue.
To continue.
What was your motion for?
My motion is to continue the public hearing at a later date, not to close it.
Absolutely. Because I think all the farmers that they buy logs, so should be sitting there talking to.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to continue the public hearing at a later date. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Was posed.
Aye.
Motion passed.
So we won't do any readings or adoption today? Do you want that to be on next week's agenda or you want, oh, you need more than?
When does Andy come back? Two weeks out.
Two weeks out, to continue it two weeks from now. We'll do the next, or continue the public hearing on this, well.
Andy or Jana would, either one.
Either one be here.
All right. Next, thanks, Tony.
Thanks, Tony.
Next item on the agenda, Tim Smack for County Treasurer, discuss out of county convenience. Next item on the agenda, Tim Smack for County Treasurer, discuss out of county convenience fees.
I guess I'm not sure exactly where you want me to start. Kind of laid it out in your email to you guys exactly what we were talking about for county convenience and speeding. Um, it's something that the.
Thank you for coming, everybody.
It's something that the uh. Counties have the option to charge for a driver's license transaction here within the. In the state of Iowa. Um, it's ten dollars. Basically, it would just be a. Add on to. The driver's license fee for anybody from out of county. I actually in my.
Your numbers.
Notes I kind of.
What roughly three hundred a year?
Yeah, three hundred a year and that's just. That's just the issuance for people. For out of county residents that would get their driver's license renewed here. That doesn't count anybody that would happen to um own property here. So those would actually just come off of that number. I mean, whether that number is half of the people, I don't, I don't know. But I know there's a lot of people that obviously. That could possibly live in Howard County that still own property in Winnebago County. And pay property tax here, so they would actually be exempt from that.
Yeah, so the point is that if you have an out of county resident, but they have. Property here, they, they could, they wouldn't pay the fee, so you might be.
They're paying property taxes to offset the cost.
Correct.
Tim, how long does it take to process? The application if you come in, I come in for a driver's license, I've got a, I present everything. I take the test that if I need to, you. Photograph me, you do all the paperwork. How long does it take to process a person through on an application? Ten to fifteen minutes.
Depends on what we're talking, because we, you know, we do all kinds of different transactions. I mean, if you're talking about. You're coming in, you just get your picture taken, update your address. Not doing any other documentation, don't really need to check your vision. That probably takes. Eight minutes. But if you give your company and you got a medical report and we have to send you off to that. We're talking, could be days that we're working on the same transaction in order to get that person through. Generally speaking though. I'd say fifteen, twenty minutes.
So the state pays us uh seven dollars for the process that we do and the county taxpayer pays for all the rest of the processing time. And if it takes seven, eight minutes, okay. Your staff costs roughly a dollar a minute. To uh, to the county taxpayer to do the service. And so the state kind of pays for. Those, those quick ones, anything that takes longer. It's gonna be, the taxpayer is funding, so that's fine if it's a. Costs roughly a dollar a minute. To uh, to the county taxpayer to do the service. And so the state kind of pays for. Those, those quick ones, anything that takes longer. It's gonna be, the taxpayer is funding, so that's fine if it's a, if it's a person that's paying taxes in the county, but if it's somebody that's coming from the outside. It's only fair that the person pays at least some fee towards it. If it takes thirty minutes to process. They're paying. Ten dollars out of that and then the county taxpayers are paying the rest of it. Because the same cost per minute. That runs through, your staff runs between fifty four to sixty two dollars an hour. If they only get two weeks vacation, that doesn't count the days they don't have paid, ten paid holidays. So when you look at those numbers, I have a hard time for the taxpayer's sake. To say, okay, it's fine, it's, I can be benevolent and we can take care of the other people. But otherwise, when the other counties do it, I see no reason why we should not be charging the convenience fee.
The other counties, not many counties do it, I don't believe. I contacted everyone around us. One out of the five is charging the fee. Fayette is the only one. In our area that is actually charging.
They're like us, they have six hundred people in that county, less than we do in our county. So we're. They're the only other ones that do. And then other, you know, some of these other counties, because everybody keeps getting pressed. I think that uh. Julie's email to us asking why we don't is a valid concern that came from a taxpayer. I guess one that happened to these bonders. So I, the only answer I have is I don't see. I don't see the reason why we shouldn't. We're not trying to.
Okay.
We're trying to take care of the taxpayers of Winnebago County.
I, I agree with you. If that's the goal, I actually think not charging is actually gonna take care of the county better. Based on the, the items I brought up in my email, because I actually think we'll, we'll actually get more revenue in. By not charging it and turning those people away when they find out that they have to pay the fee. And then go ahead and do their out of county transfers, because then we, we continue to get those additions.
I don't, I just don't see Julie Fisher here to be able to hear that answer to her question. Oh, sorry.
She's right here.
Does that answer your question?
If, if you could go through the email that you sent us, you, you presented a very logical explanation of why it makes more sense to not charge the fee for the county's sake. Economically, and if you could repeat those here today for me.
I wasn't sure if that got forward to Julie or not, because I didn't have her email, so. Um, basically, you know, the overview of the transaction is the customers coming in for their driver's license. They may be from out of county. The county has the option to add a ten dollar convenience fee. Now. Winnebago County, over the last two years, I did from twenty twenty three and twenty twenty four. We write about three hundred out of county issuance a year. Like I said, that, that isn't, anybody that owns property pays property tax here. In the county would be exempt from paying that fee, so it's definitely less than that number. That we would even be looking at possibly add into our revenue line. And my, then my uh, my hesitation, I guess, would be for. You know, are we making our station less attractive to other Iowa residents to come in? And actually just get their driver's license renewed? Are they gonna choose not to come here and possibly then not to, you know, make a vehicle title transfer in our office as well? Which then we actually lose out on. Additional revenue, I mean, what that is is unknown. It could be up to an additional thirty dollars per transaction. That isn't necessarily the case for everyone, it isn't, you know, not. And then with uh. You know, I guess ultimately it comes down to being able to just help the. County, county residents as well as the state residents is just being able to come in and do it. I'm not opposed to charging a fee, I'm actually not. But I actually think overall, it actually benefits the county more by not doing it based on. Based on that reasoning that, you know, the county then wouldn't get. The seven dollars for the transaction. If they chose just not to go here, because we would be one of two in this six county area that would be charging the fee. Whether they do or not, I, I don't, I don't, whether the other counties would fall in and do it, I don't, I don't know that. I've talked to all, all the treasures in the surrounding counties, Elmaki, Clayton, Fayette. Chickasaw and Howard. And. The only one that's doing it, he was kind of like, eh, I don't know if it's actually good for us. Is what he specifically told me on the phone, because he's like, you know, in February, we only did sixteen out of county transactions. It added a hundred and sixty dollars to their, to their revenue line. He's like, but, you know, January, I think he said he had thirty six or something. So I mean, it does add some, but he wasn't sure whether it actually took away, because he's like, he said, I've had people walk right out when they got told, when they got told. There was additional ten dollars, he's like. They walked out, he's like, and I'm like, he said, they're probably never gonna come back. Why will never be able to renew their driver's license as well as their spouse or their kids? They just will come here.
So is the seven dollar fee set by the state?
Yes.
We can't raise that.
We cannot.
So they're paying seven dollars anyway, regardless of what county they're coming here from. Everybody is paying and.
The state is.
The county, the county's fee out of that, out of what the customer pays for an issuance is seven.
Seven.
Regardless of which county they go to.
I, I think the, the point is that if you look at just the driver's license. I don't think you can, it's gonna be hard to say it loses the county money to. Add the fee, I think you're. Probably the number of seven dollars you don't get will be offset by the number of ten dollars you do get. The one year where you really lose something is if that person. Doesn't decide to come and do their title transfer at your office too, because that could be. I mean, the regular fees plus the ten dollar transaction, you could be anywhere from twenty five to fifty dollars. Revenue with the tax. Two fifty per title plus ten and. Or whatever it is now, five dollars per whatever the fees are. I mean, it could be twenty five to fifty dollars that you don't get because they don't do their title. That's gonna not. That's the one you have to worry about. How many of those there are, like Tim said, I don't have any idea.
Right.
And I don't think, I think either way. This isn't a big money deal, so whatever the board wants to do, you can try it. I mean, if you put it on for a couple of years and. It doesn't seem much of a change in revenue, then maybe it doesn't hurt, but. If you get fewer out of county title transfers, then you're losing money.
A question just on. Who is in charge of what? So just bear with me for a second. Is this up to the treasurer as the elected official put in that position by the bowlers to make his decision? Or is it ours to make?
I don't, we didn't get, Andy didn't answer. I read the code, I don't think the code was, isn't explicit on who it is, so I think it's a working. You, Tim, working with you guys has to have to decide. If one of you wants to and one of you doesn't, then it's, we need to get Andy involved, but Tim has said he. Whatever you guys want, he'll go along with.
I mean, if that's what you guys want, I.
If that's what you want, he'll go along with it, but if someone complains, he's gonna tell him to talk to you.
I'm gonna offer my opinion, I know that's a surprise to everybody, but my opinion on this is if we get people from other counties habitually coming here. To do this work, we are gonna make more money on that because they may go out to eat while they're here. They may do some shopping downtown while they're here.
Came here for another reason primarily. But we've got, if we don't, if we lose a few people, then we got more staff time and maybe then other people don't have to wait. Taxpayers.
May I say something? From listening to your account, I didn't know there were these other factors involved. And it sounds to me like you have a point there that. We may be better. Keeping open the door and not charging the fee, so I just, I thought it was just one thing, I didn't understand the connection.
I, I think when I talked to Tim, I think. There are definitely, you could. Take groups of transaction, I mean, there are types of transactions where he's spending giving tests and. Spending a lot of time with people from out of county that aren't ever going to probably do any other transaction where we're losing money. But there are some where they might do a title transfer, or they might go out to eat or something, then maybe we're, we are losing money, so it's trying to. Guess what that balance is, is really, I mean, you can't say, well, we're gonna only gonna do it for people who. Take a test and don't uh, do a title, well, that doesn't work, it's all or nothing, so.
Yeah, and then I, I just, the one other one is that the whole property tax, one, the exemption there for property tax, I mean. In order to get there, I mean. How do we necessarily say this person paid property tax, it's in their. Property is in X Y Z company, that's who remitted the payment. How do I know that this person is actually, that John Doe owns X Y Z company? Because. I mean, it could be big, it, it could be, I mean, but not everybody knows everybody. And I mean, especially if you're talking about somebody that doesn't actually live in the county. That they own property here, but it's like, well, you really don't. First you ask them and just say, they just say, yes, I own it, and you move on.
They say that with voter registration and other things too, and yes, you know. Then we take them at their word.
No, that's all checked, I mean, there's no. Nobody's saying, yeah, I live here, so let me vote without being verified.
I mean, they, they do check the box that they're a US citizen and we don't verify that too.
And it's not.
I guess my opinion is that I think Tim had a lot of valid points initially, I was like, yeah, let's charge that, but then. If you own property but don't live here and you're exempt, I think that's gonna be probably a number of people. That like to do business in decor and that's why they. Are here. And should have the privilege of doing it in that respect. Missing out on a title transfer. I think it's probably gonna end up being a wash. Just saves a lot of hassle to. Not have to check, but then again, if we have long lines of people waiting. That'd be different, but I don't think right now we have long lines of people waiting to get driver's license or duly. I mean, we don't have long waits, we're doing it by appointment. We've, I've actually looked at every single day this year. Since the beginning of January, we've had appointments available every single day. We haven't even filled up our appointment schedule. So I mean, if somebody needs to get in and get a driver's license. They can call us day of and we can actually still get that man, it's not like it's uh. It's not like we're, I mean, I know kind of calling other counties and stuff and they're talking. Two, three, four days out on an appointment. We don't, we haven't had that, I mean, we have, I think, twenty. Appointments available every single day. I, yeah, I think it'd be interesting to. If we did change it to. Keep track of how many people are from out of county residents that act, actually own and at the end of the year say, well, here's. Here's the real number of.
Or maybe not do it.
False flags.
Make a most, not make, set it right now, but have Tim do some research for the next few months and bring it up again. Six months from now or.
There's that possibility, are you willing to do that? Do it as long as we set the parameters. Stuff, yeah, I can do it. Because I mean, I can get the numbers, it's just breaking down. You know, the hardest part is gonna be knowing out of those, you know, average three hundred, a hundred a year. Is how, how am I gonna know? Because I just get a number, how am I gonna know whether they own property or not, that, that'll be the.
It might be, it might be. It might be that they have to own the property, I mean, if they're. If they're, if it's in their name. If it's in a. LLC or something, then they don't own the property, so they don't get the exemption. I mean, that's, it's not them, and so it's something different.
Exactly, it's our difficulty, yeah. Personally own property in this county. Still processing, but just make a little. Check mark that, yes, they did.
Well, everything you can, Tim, to get rid of the appointments, because that's a, that's a stickler with a lot of people in the county that don't live, that work till four o'clock in the afternoon. And don't. Don't have Monday through Friday off. But have to take off work, so find a way to help with that and I'll be satisfied.
I.
I, the other states that I have lived in, you never had to make an appointment, you stood in line if it was two hours.
That's what we're trying to do. That the advantage of having us.
Trying not to do that.
Well, but I, I don't think the appointment issue is just the hours we allow.
The hours we allow makes it difficult.
Like passports were open to. Saturdays, I mean, if we could be open one Saturday morning at least for.
Shuffle the scheduling.
But they got to have. Everyone wanting that day. Yeah, that's probably. So it's. The vast majority of residents, eighteen to seventy, have the ability to renew their driver's license online. I mean, so they would really only need to be coming in once every sixteen years to renew their driver's license.
You convince them of that, Tim, there's a lot of folks that don't do it.
I would prefer they don't. I would prefer them to come in, I, that is my preference.
Make it easy.
I'm not saying that that, that they can't do it online and making it easier for them. The state is making it easier for them to do that. By, by allowing them to, you know. I guess I'm not sure where the disconnect is there for them. To say it's such a hardship in order to get in to do that or pay property tax or. Renew their vehicle registration, which they could all do that.
Well, that's a hardship that doesn't actually exist right now.
I wonder.
Well, I wonder if, you know.
No, hasn't been a problem.
Educating the public that you can renew online.
Yeah.
I think a lot of people don't understand that. The process.
It's a lot, come a long way since before the driver's license was in the treasurer's office, they used to have a. DOT had a traveling team and they were here.
Yeah.
One day a week, Tuesdays, and it was in the downstairs of the Farm Bureau building on Tuesdays was the only day you could do your driver's license. And so this was a, it was a selling point at the time when they moved it to the treasurer's office, because I was in the treasurer's office at that time, I mean, that. We're going from one day a week to five days a week, I mean, that was a big.
What's the chance of changing to half hour lunch hour and staying open till four thirty like clerk court, court does? And then we wouldn't have the same security issue besides in the courthouse building.
Clerk court is not open to the public till four thirty. Clerk court is not open to the public till four thirty. They close their doors at four. They do paperwork and filing stuff for the last half hour, but they are not open to the public.
Then why do we have that concern over the. The courthouse being closed or not by clerk court's office?
We don't do, we don't, that isn't a concern anymore. The court, the outside doors are locked at four.
So they leave, so the door goes shut.
Would you be willing to take the information for maybe three months to see what percentage of the out of county. Actually own property?
Okay, I just wanna make sure it's clear what I'm doing. I'm asking anybody that has an out of county. Residential address. Whether they own property here, and that's the only question. No extra fee, just curious what you're.
Yeah, yeah.
I can do that.
I mean, if we do this over a three month span, we should figure out.
Yeah.
Get a percentage over three months.
The out of county ones end up having, paying property tax, so now you're down to. A hundred, I mean, you're fifteen hundred a year at ten dollars each is not a lot of money to be. Yeah.
Yeah, it would be nice.
That would be great, thank you.
That would be nice.
Thanks, Tim. And thank you for the email with the numbers. That was very helpful.
And a dollar an hour, that was expensive, Tim.
I mean, having worked in that department years ago, I know, I mean, there are. We knew back then, there are certain types of transactions where the county lost a lot of money. And then there was. Ones that we just loved it when a person came in for just an address change, cause we could actually turn a profit on one of those, but. You can't. Can't say yes for some and not for others, so it gets to be a.
It's really not a problem.
But, but the amount of time spent. The cost of the time was less than the. Cost that you got reimbursed versus the ones, you have one with the long one with a few tests and you've. Ultimately blown all that extra time spent. Especially with bad work, sometimes people would come to the county, do all their testing here. So we spend hours giving them tests, whether it's driving test, written test, and then they go to their own county to actually get the thing. Issued, well, then we didn't get any money for all. All that time we spent. They probably still have that nowadays, so.
We haven't, you know, that reverse where it's here and, you know, they go out and it's like we've done all the work and they decide to go someplace else, it's the same. It's like, well, I can't, you can't really do anything about it, cause I mean, ultimately we're serving. The public, so I mean, what they choose to do once we. You know, they, they can choose to go someplace else.
It's now if you buy a vehicle out of state and it's a virtual title. The verification has to go back and forth with that is.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last item on the agenda, under miscellaneous, the educational grant for recycling.
What does that mean?
Um, so the solid waste agency gives grants to the participating. Entities, so the counties and cities for recycling education to the public. And part of the requirement also includes an action by the board, their governing board, board supervisors or city council to. Approve the grant application, so. Jeff and Evan have put together the grant application, so they just need you to approve it and then I send them a copy of the minutes with the grant application.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion is second for the grant application approval. Uh, one of those in favor, say aye. Is opposed, signed, she carries the manuals.
That's been a very positive. Position and it's working really, really well.
Really working.
To have them back, so it's recycling.
So community service building updates, I guess. Got rid of a lot of stuff from the old DHS building on Saturday. Probably roughly twenty-five to thirty filing cabinets.
What was your revenue?
I don't, I haven't added it up yet, so.
But it's out.
It's out, and, and even a. Another benefit that you may not recognize is that some of the other things, you know, by talking with people and making suggestions. There was benefit for the Historic Preservation Society down the street, uh, things that benefit them. They'll be, but FYI, they will be moving, as soon as their new addition is done, they'll be moving everything that's upstairs here at the old jail. They'll be removing that and putting it into their archive at their new building.
They got desks.
And they came and got desks and some file cabinets and things, and then also some of the old chairs that we've been storing. Uh, down at our mini stories that came out of the courtroom. There, I, I had a conversation, it was funny, with, with Stacy Gosling and. I said, you know, you have your meeting around a table there and you've got those, you know, you have, everybody's sitting on those wonderful folding metal chairs. Why don't you have a piece of history and sit on those old chairs that came out of the courtroom and they can really authentic. And it's perfect down there, so Stacy is gonna meet with John Halverson and go pick up some of those to use down there for that, which is just perfect. So I mean, overall, I think what we did with it was very positive and I thought a lot of people benefited from it. We did have. You know, secondary rural department used some things out of there, recycling used some things out of there. I'm still gonna make a phone call and see, I forgot to ask if the shirt. Might possibly need some wild canvas for evidence storage, I don't know. I'll make a phone call and see, we still have some file cabinets left. Do you need some more of it?
No, no, I don't need any more file cabinets. I was gonna ask what the plan is. Cause in our, our publication, it said about touring the facility after the first of May. When do we wanna set up an open house or how do you wanna do that, or do I want, should I reference people to. One of you to set up a private tour, or how are we gonna do that?
I think we should have an open house. And, but that, well, really.
What day of the week do you think we should do that?
Probably on Saturday would be the best.
And that means that we need to do it next Saturday.
That's one common, I heard over and over again on Saturday. Boy, I didn't realize this building was this big.
And people, people think it's a house. You know, a difficult sized house.
Do you want to like set it up that. It's a, a certain timeframe on Saturday for the, for an open house and. One or two of you will be there or you'll take shifts or something, so if anyone shows up, or do you wanna. Me to try to schedule them, or how do you wanna do that? Cause it says to contact the auditor to, for a tour of the facility after May first, and so that's coming up this week, so I just need to know.
Does he take care of the, uh, open house then too?
I mean, you could at that point too, continue your garage sale. I mean, if your person comes to look at.
That's true.
Comes to look at the facility and you wanna try to sell some more things, but between now and then, you may wanna do some cleaning too to make.
It's all vacuumed, you got it all cleaned up.
Cleaning up there has done a marvelous job.
Excellent job.
What were your hours last week?
Nine to twelve, but at eight o'clock.
I got there at eight, we had people, so we started at eight.
Do eight to noon open house and garage sale continuation, or do you want me to even say anything about that, or?
I don't know anything about the building, but I.
It's been many, many years since I've been in there too, so.
This Saturday is gonna work for me though.
Mark's open, anybody else?
What I need to do, so Shirley, why don't you and Mark? Please put on your best salesman hat. And help move that building.
But on that Saturday, I have already made plans.
And I'm, I might be able to, yeah, I'm just checking.
If it rains, I can, not raining.
I may possibly be able to, to make some changes, I don't know, you get Mark.
So do you want me to say eight to noon or nine to noon? Nine to noon Saturday?
Let me just look at my calendar.
And you could work out shifts, as long as not more than two of you are there at a time and doesn't, you know.
Somebody's gotta call.
Steve can't come till ten thirty, then he could relieve. Mark or Shirley, whatever.
I've got, I'm, I've got a, a funeral memorial service at eleven o'clock on Saturday in Lansing, so I'm out of pocket, I can't do it.
It's Sunday, I suppose. Maybe at.
Afternoon?
Yeah, or ten to two or.
I'm open on Sunday.
Let's maybe do Sunday then. Trying to think of.
Lot of like the businesses downtown that have Sunday hours, they're like ten to two type times when they get the most after church, but not staying real late.
I'd be open for Sunday. I mean, if somebody calls and wants.
Calls and wants to make an appointment, I could, during the week, I could beat somebody up.
Even if, uh, even if, uh, you know, Friday's first.
Versus Thursday.
Thursday, I mean, if somebody calls and wants to go look at it, it's. I mean, what, what would work for them, I mean, probably.
You know, firm to YouTube.
What about Friday afternoon? I'm open Friday afternoon.
We could do like two to six, but.
Then it doesn't take. I think I can do Friday.
Wanna do Friday then?
What hours, what hours do you think, Shirley?
Well, unless somebody else wants to do Friday, I, I'm saying if none of you are available, I can be available Friday.
I would give those to go, like I said, I haven't done anything, but.
Aren't you the three you available that Friday?
I can always depend upon the weather.
I've got an ongoing project that I could try to.
Two, two to six?
Probably two to six.
Concession stand.
And so you could start to grill.
I'll do, I'll do Friday two to six, you'll do Friday two to six?
Yeah, I'll put, I'll put it on calendar.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, I'll get it, uh, I'll tell people if they call and I'll see if I can get IT to put in an announcement again that. That will do open house and. Sale of remainder garage sale items from Tuesday. Yeah, it might not be much left.
They're just cleaning out too. We get a dumpster, or not dumpster, but a recycling. Another thing we'll just start.
Did anybody find the drafting table?
There was no drafting table. No, the, well, the engineer's office left there in the nineties. So all of those, I, I don't know that there was any.
That other drafting table that we were talking about that was in the courtroom, that's in store.
That's in storage, that was not at the garage sales. We have that, we don't have that.
Quick question, um, if we got ahold of Sam Ludikin at the Decor Newspapers this weekend, is the citywide garage sales? I wonder if she could still slip this in for Friday on that map that they produce for that.
Wait, it ain't gonna be much left.
We have to.
There's not gonna be.
No, I mean, there's, what's there, what's there now is primarily, you know, maybe twenty.
Everybody opened every file cabinet door, probably if it didn't work, they weren't gonna take it, I don't know.
They didn't want, or somebody, I'm definitely running high size, I didn't want low size. So we had lots of.
Somebody wants a desk, they could correct.
We gotta work getting those out of there this week though. And the, the wall petitions that we have.
They need to store those.
We'll store those.
Thanks, Julie. Thanks to everybody.
Hey, on a different, United Way is looking for someone to sit on their board. You takers?
Who's done it the best?
No one has.
The new physician.
It's common practice in the city's core of council members or the mayor's or on outside committees such as downtown bureau or the local chamber. We believe a similar model could help us build stronger relationships across the county and. Respond more effectively to local needs. If someone from your council or board of supervisors would be interested in representing your county on your board with the vote to commit.
We could give that to one of the other elected officials.
Oh, we could actually offer it to them.
We could offer it to the treasurer or the recorder. They don't send any committees, do they?
No, that's generally the bar of supervision.
Oh gee, I think.
Ask for donation.
New opportunity.
I'm on some very busy ones that meet often. And so I am not interested.
And many of the ones you already serve on require a.
Yes.
County participation, whereas this one, they're just asking if you're interested, so I.
Well, just let everyone think it over. Other than that, does anyone have anything else?
And we have done, it's been a few years, but we have done. They've asked us to do the payroll reduction for donations. That's for the United Way, they used to have that where you could give. Uh, and asked us to do that for a while, I don't know if they've changed their policy.
I think that was effective, I know when I went elsewhere, you know, it's easier for people to say, take five bucks a month or something.
Out of everything.
Yeah.
We have done that in the past.
Safety committee. I'd like to finish. And get that off and done before December thirty first, up to the twenty-five.
Yeah. Now, traditionally, it's been hard to do it during the summer, so.
Yeah, so I'd like to pick that back up.
Yeah, we probably, FYI, we probably ought to have, make sure that Jeff comes to it and not Kayla.
Yes.
From recycling, because that was.
Temporary.
That was temporary.
Yeah. Will you revive that?
Yeah.
Then, great.
Just, I'm in the news from MyEnergy. They were talking about how they're looking to locate it, they'd like to have a data center located somewhere in there, there's. And how do you ever leave that with having zoning look into. Restriction.
We might wanna have on that.
You made it. For them, it's, they're saying it's beneficial because they have access to additional power, the power they have. To have a large user, lessens the expense across the board. The energy they are selling. So I, I get it, but it also.
We direct point and zoning to look at data center in the order.
Well, I thought you mentioned that at one point and, you know.
At least beyond.
Yeah, I think you maybe should talk to Tony first and just see what, I mean, the accessory dwelling units, you asked them about. Two years ago and they're still. Working through that, so maybe it's on their burner, it's just.
That's what I'm asking those, is that. If we say together today, we'd like them to add this to their.
Her view. Research, yeah.
Is it an action, or can we just consensus say that right now, without it being on the agenda?
Well, I think you should probably talk to Tony and see if it is and maybe I'll.
Yeah.
We just heard at the conference, I don't know if you did too, Steve, you might have. Yeah, that they, there's a issue, there's a real potential problem, what happened to them in your county.
Cause it's not just, it's energy consumption, but also groundwater cooling. And deconditioning.
Drain them.
Two of them burned up and that's a lot of electronics melted in its place.
Yeah, they have. But they are, they're gonna hit, Iowa needs, Iowa needs, uh. Some data centers just for the direction things are going, so we're gonna have to be taking some provision for it.
A motion to return.
Second.
Motion is second for Dirkman, all those in favor, say aye.
She ended up in the emergency room over the weekend. You know, and so we have just our emergency room, they sent her to Rochester, the emergency room in the middle of the night. Spend another, that was Friday night, well, Saturday morning, like two AM. Anyway, she did make it back for prom, yeah. You know, she went to prom in a wheelchair, her date pushed her through the grand march. So. Still, still struggling. But.
Is she feeling any improvement?
She, pain wise, it's not so bad, it's just, the most recent thing is her. She, pain wise, it's not so bad, it's just, the most recent thing is her, the wound has been. They end up putting her on some antibiotic and so on, cause they, it could be infected and it's for leaving a lot and so on, I mean, the first time she had it. The wound healed up really well, and so, you know, but then she had this other issue with a leaky spinal fluid, so then they had to. Go in again to fix the leak and now the wound is having trouble healing, so. It's been, if we feel so bad for her, it's her C new year and we're getting to the end and there's so much going on and she can hardly participate.
I'd say hospital is one of the most dangerous places on earth.
Yeah.
Something most sceptical is food.
Yeah.
That's a tough one, I have.
She's got a band concert next week, but she can hardly blow on her instrument, she's gonna. She just can't blow very hard. She's a, plays a country horn, but she's gonna sit in the band and pretend to play so that she could at least get her last band concert in the books.
Thanks, Al.
Yeah, that's tough.
You remember about the roller accident on February fourteen?
Yeah.
And fatality.
Hit Culver and went back over the road, flipped over and the guy was half out of his. Just can't.
Wouldn't happen if it went fast, I mean, if you could.
One side and something over and over.
I can't see where he went. Cause it was, there's no evidence of it when you're just driving by and looking. I thought maybe it was down the bottom, down above the.
Shoulders, make it safer still. You could run fast.
You go fast, yeah. And now that we got it, it's a nice smooth road.
It's easier to go fast, it's true.
A twenty-one year old sometimes doesn't make the right choices. Ouch, oh.
Hey, if you.
You can, you can, oh, stop here. There it is, Mark, yeah, your request, Mark.
You have to take. People's out. Oh, really? Awesome, thank you.
No, that was downstairs and.
Awesome.
It worked and so Mark had the idea, hey.
Steve and Mark, if there's any need for me on that Friday, I am open, give me a call.
Alright, I'll see, I need someone.
I hope we can find some, a good use, that's really nice to.
Has there been any interest yet at all?
I haven't heard of any, but. Yeah, we're, we're a little ways out yet from.
Everybody's out of the room now, you can shut it off. Thank you.